Sarah's online.
You have to turn your volume down.
Good morning.
Hi.
Hi, Sarah. I would like to call the Concord Carlisle Regional School DEIB Committee meeting to order, and we're going to call the order by roll call because Sarah's online. Mr. Booth, we can start with you. Morano present for both.
Rankin, Rankin present for both.
Wilson present for region.
All right, so we are going to start out with public comment, and we will start in the room first. We have a time limit of three minutes for a public comment. If you would like to make a public comment, and you have a blue sheet, you can hand it to me. And if you are online, if you can use the raise hand picture, we will get you on that. I don't see any in the room.
Ron, our, Ron and Row, the dean at Concord, he was supposed to be here.
I'll just go, maybe he's online, because we start with public comment and then we'll move on. Sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay. So I see none in the room. Anyone online?
No.
All right, and we are moving on. So we are ready to start a discussion, and Andrew is with us today to give us his DEIB progress report for the 2022-2023 school year. We're excited to have you here with us. I think this is our fourth and final meeting of this year, so we can see everything that's been happening.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for having me here this morning. I'm going to share my screen at this moment. And we'll get started. Hey, I think that looks good. So again, I think the focus, again, the focus of this meeting is really to give an end of the year report on all of the DEIB-related initiatives that we've been able to accomplish this year. There's a lot of information on this slide, in this slideshow presentation, so bear with me. So the agenda for today, again, talk about how, you know, how we got here. I'm going to give a quick overview of our district-wide strategic plan, our professional development paths, our DEIB strategic plan, and of course, the equity audit that was completed back in January of this year. I'm also going to give an overview of what we did accomplish this year, so some DEIB progress monitoring information there. And then looking ahead to next year, I will share some DEIB initiatives for the 2023-2024 school year. And then, of course, I will end with some end-of-the-year events that are upcoming. So how did we get here? So of course, many of you know, we have a pretty comprehensive district-wide strategic plan. Strand three of that, of that strategic plan is focused on our strategic objective, on inclusive culture. And, you know, I looked over the objective there and really wanted to just highlight some of the key words that you will find in that objective. So a strong focus on inclusive culture, a strong focus on how we value and embrace diversity. There's a lot of work focused on culturally responsive curriculum. There's focus on cultural proficiency through our professional development paths for our educators. And then, of course, our focus on equity, making sure that the needs of all of our diverse students are met. And then, of course, accountability for sustaining this work for the foreseeable future. In terms of our professional development paths, again, we have a pretty comprehensive PD framework here in Concord. Just right at the top is some statistics based on this year's participation. We saw an 84% participation from our educators, particularly our faculty, who all participated in various DEIB-related PD paths. More specifically, out of 15 professional development PD paths, there were 10 PD paths that were focused on DEIB. And some of, some of the examples there, we had a PD path focused on African-American abolitionist and the story of Concord. We had a PD path focused on instructional practices to support equity for all learners. We had a PD path focused on choosing and using inclusively diverse literature. And then, of course, our longstanding professional development path, the Ideas Course, the anti-racist school practices, which is facilitated by Dr. Paula Martin, who's our our district cultural competency consultant, and then Ed Brien, who is an ideas instructor. And then this image here on the left, I think many of you all have seen from Kristin Anderson, our Assistant Superintendent of Teach and Learn, who oversees professional development. This, this, this visual here really outlines all the PD offerings that we provide to our educators. So in terms of our five-year DEIB strategic plan, again, last year was my first year in the role as Director of DEIB. And so, strong focus was, was really to get our community, our school community, our educators, our support staff, our administrators, school committee, really to, to have a shared understanding and commitment of DEIB across all of our schools, right? And so, this visual here on the left really defines what we mean by diversity, what we mean by equity, what we mean by inclusion, and of course, belonging. Over to the right is our DEIB strategic plan, which I implemented going into this 2023- 2022-2023 school year. And within our DEIB strategic plan, we have six priority areas and, of course, associated objectives. Those priority areas include professional development, a focus on school culture, culturally responsive curriculum, an equitable, inclusive classroom, student and family engagement, hiring, mentoring, and retention, and of course, being transparent in our communication of our DEIB values, and of course, institution accountability is embedded in there as well. Earlier in this past January, we completed our two-year process of their, of the equity audit. And of course, our consultants, Dr. Kalise Warne and Dr. Carol Blake, led us through this equity audit. Some of the findings and recommendations are noted on this slide, but more specifically, our recommend, the recommendations provided by Dr. Warne and Dr. Blake included hiring and diversity, MECO and BIPOC students, professional development, family and community engagement, and student engagement. What you would notice within these recommendations is that each of these recommendations actually align closely to five out of the six priority areas in the DEIB strategic plan. And so, again, I think, you know, when you look through the equity audit findings, which you can find right on our district website under the DEIB tab, you can learn a lot more about some of the findings and recommendations, and of course, some of the data that Dr. Warne and Dr. Blake collected. So, in terms of what we accomplished this year, I will say that there are a lot, and what this presentation, you know, this presentation doesn't capture everything, but it captures a lot of what, a lot of the, you know, big initiatives that we did accomplish. And so, I'll start with just our DEIB objectives. These objectives were actually outlined by the DEIB planning committee that I worked with last, last spring. And so, they came up with these specific initiatives for this 2022-2023 school year. And the goal here is that each year, we will come up with new initiatives to focus on. And again, all of these initiatives align to each of the priority areas that are here. And so, you know, the check marks that you see basically indicates that we have accomplished what we set out to do this year. And in addition, the rotating arrow that you see there means that the work continues, right? This work of DEIB never ends. And so, while the specific initiatives that are noted here are completed, the work within each of these priority areas are never finished. And so, you know, I will touch on a few of those initiatives. In terms of PD, you know, we did spend a lot of time on this this year, where we actually incorporated DEIB professional development opportunities for all of our faculty. And so, I had the pleasure of presenting to all of our faculty, with the exception of the middle school, which we really just ran out of time, but we are slated to begin with the middle school in the fall. I presented on topics such as macroaggressions, you know, really helping our faculty understand why we are making this shift from inclusion to belonging, right? And not to say that inclusion, you know, the work around inclusion isn't important, but it's, 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 it's the shift that we're making towards belonging that really encompasses everyone feeling like they are connected in our community. In terms of, let's see, culturally responsive curriculum, you know, equitable and inclusive classroom, you have heard a lot about our MTSS, multi-tiered system of support, from our Assistant Superintendent of Teach and Learn, Kristin Anderson. And so, if you want to learn more about our MTSS framework, please, please get in touch with Kristin. In terms of our family and student engagement, you know, we, this year, you know, very exciting. We brought back our multicultural food festival, which was widely attended. And I know many folks in our community who are really looking forward to that event, and of course, it will be back next year. In terms of hiring, Denise Zahn, who's the human director of human resources, we spent a lot of time this year on our hiring, mentoring, and retention strategies. And I will share a little bit more about that on the next slide, so I won't get too much into it. And then, of course, in terms of accountability, we had a, we met monthly with the DEIB steering committee. And again, I'll talk a little bit more about that later in, in, in the presentation. So let's go over some specific accomplishments from this year. And again, I'm not going to touch on everything on this, on this slide, because there are a lot. And, and I will also say that what is noted on this slide does not capture everything that we actually accomplished. I have a full spreadsheet of that, but again, I just selected a couple of things from each of the DEIB priority areas. So in terms of PD, as I mentioned, you know, 84% of PD participation from faculty, again, those PD offerings, 15 of those PD offerings, or rather, 10 of those PD offerings were focused on DEIB. We had 27 educators who were enrolled in our Ideas Anti-Racist School Practices Course, which, again, Dr. Paula Martin, our district cultural competency consultant facilitates. We participated in a virtual one-year professional learning community cohort that is hosted by DESI. And this cohort really is to help districts, it's really support districts who are enhancing teacher diversification and recruitment strategies. In terms of school culture, first, first of its kind, first time this year, approximately 300 ninth-grade students participated in the Ideas Training, which was, which was a bias training. And again, in the past, we have partnered with the ADL Anti-Defamation League, but we really felt that going into this year was important that all of our ninth graders were able to receive that bias training. And again, on some ongoing work at the middle school, of course, is our Celtics Playbook Initiative. This year, close to 90 students were selected and trained to be playbook leaders, and they facilitated the playbook initiative, the bias training over the course. Actually, back in the fall, they, they conducted this training. So the training is actually roughly three, three and a half to about four hours. And so, that training occurred in the morning in both at Concord Middle School with all the sixth graders, seventh and, and eighth graders. Let's see, a couple of things here in terms of culturally responsive curriculum. Thirteen diverse books were reviewed for adoption at the primary and secondary levels by the Cultural Competence, Competency and Literature Committee, which is facilitated by our Assistant Superintendent of Teach and Learn, Kristin Anderson. We have 14 educators, K through 12, on the committee, which includes our librarians. We created, going into the next year, actually, we have since created Bringing Back History, Black History to CCHS, which is a course that a group of 11th and 12th graders will focus on with, with their social studies teacher, with a social studies teacher, to develop a project-based Black History course. And so, this course is slated to begin. And the official course will begin in the 2024-2025 school year. A couple of important things here to note, I think, student engagement, again, student and community engagement, you know, again, the multicultural food festival, the, at the elementary level, all the heritage and international festivals that occurred. Sir, there were several student conferences offered this year. We had five CCHS students who attended the Ideas High School Leadership Conference that occurred in, in December. We had Concord Middle School students of color participated in the Annual Tenacity Challenge, which is hosted by Bedford Public Schools. This is an academic competition in math, science, and leadership. We had eight CCHS Boston students attend the MDA, Mecho Directors Association Youth Forum Conference. And this year's topic was titled Loving the Skin I'm In: An Intentional Session to Discuss Reclaiming Identities as MECO Students. In terms of hiring, mentoring, and retention, we pointed eight DEIB teacher leads across five of our, five out of six of our schools to lead DEIB initiatives within their school building. This effort was supported by the CCTA and CTA. Let's see, again, we acquired membership with the Massachusetts Partnership for Diversity in Education, MPDE. This is a 50-member district organization working collaboratively each month to enhance and expand teacher diversification strategies and applicant pools. And because we are members of MPDE, we actually have access to their applicant pool, which has a ton, a ton, a ton of educators of color who are looking for, you know, opportunities across districts in the Commonwealth. I'm excited to share, and I think we shared this back in the fall, that we were awarded roughly $15,846 per district. So each district received this amount from DESI, again, to support the efforts that we are engaged in around teacher diversification here in our, in our school district. And then, lastly, to touch on a couple of accountability pieces here, we, of course, have two MECO parent representatives, Ayesha Lawton and Domingos De Rosa, who were appointed on the school committee. Early in the fall, we instituted a derogatory language policy that was supported, again, by the school committee. We have ensured that there's MECO transportation for Boston students on the weekends and during school vacation weeks. The admin team, back in August, received training on how we investigate Title VI and Title IX civil rights violations. This training was offered by Paige Tobin, who was our district legal counsel. And then, of course, currently, we are sort of in the implementation stage of rolling out our Bias Incident Response Protocol and Report in Form. And as of this week, Concord Middle School is actually piloting that Report in Form. And we have already sort of received a few reports from students who now feel empowered to be upstanders. So I'll touch on a couple of other pertinent DEIB information, starting with our DEIB and NT, Anti-Racism Steering Committee. I want to just say thank you, thank you, thank you to every member on this committee. As you will see there, it was very well represented, from, you know, our MECO directors, all the way to members from CPAC, our Human Rights Council Core School Committee. We had student representatives, which was especially important to include their voices in this work. And then, over to the right, far right, is all the, are all the topics that, that, that were presented within this committee. Professional development presentation was provided by Kristin Anderson. She also presented on our academic achievement data. I presented on our Bias Incident Reporting System. We had our MECO directors, Felicia Paisley and Deborah Jemerson, present on MECO and where we are with, with our program. We had Denise Zahn, who is going to present on hiring and retention, actually, this month. And of course, we also had Debbie Dixon and Val Granswigs, who presented on special education. And then, for June, my plan, my goal actually is to give this exact presentation to the committee to closes, to close us out for the year. In terms of our student, DEIB Student Advisory Council, this is very new this year. This was one of my major goals this year, was to really start to meet with students and hear about some of their ideas, some of their initiatives within this work. And so, we have, right at the top are the students who are part of this advisory council. We have Jason, Autumn, Maddie, Cosmos, Amelia, Alex, Ramire, and Aya. All of these students are currently Concord, Concord Carlisle High School students. And we met, we had our, we held our first meeting back in February, and these are some of the initiatives that, that we brainstormed, that they felt was important to elevate going into next year. So again, I'll touch on a few here. Number one was to ensure diversity in school meals, which I know that our Director of Food Services, Jess Brown, is very much focused on this year. We, we also talked about, rather, the students talked a lot about creating more affinity spaces and activities for students. We spent some time talking about how we can better promote collaboration across all student clubs and organizations. I think students really want to be more inclusive of some of the activities that they host. For example, if Black Student Union is hosting an event, well, they should think, they should think about inviting other students like Spectrum, you know, Student Government, our newly cemented Asian affinity group, right? Just to ensure that students feel like they are part of, not just their own clubs that they participate in, but part of the CCHS community as a whole. And so, the work of the Student Advisor Group will continue in the fall. And again, just very excited to be meeting with students. In terms of our district demographics, our racial diversity of staff and students, this is a resource directly from the Human Resources Department. Again, Denise Zahn, Director of HR, we, we have spent a lot of time really looking at, you know, our, our hiring and retention strategies, recruitment strategies. And earlier this year, the data that you see on the left was data that we collected to share with our, with our membership, with the MPDE, Massachusetts Partnership for Diversity in Education. And so, when you look at our district, again, both districts, CPS, CCHSD, we found that about 26% of our students are students of color. And then, when we looked at our faculty and support staff, roughly 11.47% are faculty and support staff of color. In terms of our hiring and, I'm not sure what that was, in terms of our hiring and retention data for CPS, as you will see there, since 2019, you know, we, we went back that far to just, you know, take a, 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 a further look into what our, how we've been diversifying our, our faculty and staff. And so, back in 2019, roughly 25% of all new hires were faculty and support staff of color. And as you will see, I think we're right back to where we were back in 2019. And so, this year, again, 25% of, of all new hires were faculty and support staff of color. And the graph below shows our, our trend over the last couple of years. Within this timeframe, again, within, so since 2019 to present day, we have hired, on the CPS side, we've hired 41 BIPOC employees, again, as faculty and support staff. 11 of those BIPOC employees are no longer in the district. And so, we have been able to retain roughly 30 of those BIPOC employees between 2019 to date. If you look on the CCHSD side, since 2019, back in 2019, roughly 13% of all new hires were faculty and support staff of color. This year, all new hires accounted for about 16% faculty and support staff of color. So within this timeframe, again, from 2019 all the way to, to now, 15 BIPOC employees have been hired. Five of those BIPOC employees are no longer in the district, and we've been able to retain 10 of those BIPOC employees since 2019. So total, if you're, you know, doing the math, both districts combined, that's roughly 56 BIPOC employees hired since 2019, and 16 of those BIPOC employees are no longer in our district. All right, in terms of bias incidents, so this year, we really began to be intentional about tracking some of the bias incidents that are occurring within our schools. And so, you know, I'll start with this pie chart that is here. As you will know, roughly, you know, we, we experienced roughly 10, 10 incidents of where students used racial slurs or made racist comments. Two homophobic incidents, one incident dealing with Islamophobic slurs, and two incidents related to anti-Semitism. Some information that I think is worth noting here from our equity audit findings, 92% of, of parents felt comfortable reporting racial harassment or discrimination they witnessed at their child's school to a teacher or their principal. 81% of teachers felt comfortable reporting racial harassment or, or discrimination that they experienced. 87% of teachers feel comfortable reporting racial harassment or discrimination they witnessed. 60% of middle school and high school students of color, and 64% of white students at the middle and high schools were unaware of a process for handling incidents of racial, ethnic discrimination or bias incidences. Both students of color and white students reported experiencing discrimination or bias and not reporting it. So in terms of some of the training programs that we have instituted to, to help prevent bias incidents or hate crimes in our schools, of course, our ideas, one, anti-racist practices in schools for our educators, is an ongoing professional development offering each year. We have our Celtics Playbook Initiative at the middle school, which is, again, is an implicit bias, anti-bullying, anti-discrimination training program. And we are expanding the Celtics Playbook Initiative to the fifth graders, starting in the fall. Our ninth-grade academy, Ideas Implicit Bias Training Program, again, this was the first time this year that we pulled all 300 ninth graders together for this bias training, and that will continue again in the fall. And then, of course, you know, a lot of the work that is happening at the elementary level with the adoption of responsive classroom and Fly5, I will ask that folks reach out directly to Kristin Anderson to hear a little bit more about Fly5, and of course, our implementation of responsive classroom in the fall.
And we are going to see that on Tuesday night.
Perfect, perfect timing.
You'll hear some of, yeah.
It's part of a big, part of a big picture discussion.
Right. So again, expanding on our bias, our bias incidents, we are really, you know, in the, in the process of implementing our Bias Incident Response Protocol and Report in Form. This visual here has been, you know, two-year process of really making sure that we are consistent across all of our schools in terms of how we respond to bias incidents and hate crimes that, that might occur in our schools. And so, again, this visual really outlines what our protocol, what our response protocol is. And then, in terms of our Report in Form, you know, this is hard to see, but a link to the live bias Report in Form that is now available at Concord Middle School is now available for students at Concord Middle School. So if you click on this link, it will take you right to that form so that you are able to see a copy of it. And again, you know, we've already heard from students, you know, we rolled out this form on Monday, and we have already received reports from students. So again, you know, they feel empowered, they feel that they can be upstanders who, who disrupt, who intervene when these incidents are happening. And again, the whole point of this rollout is to make sure that students do follow through and report these incidents when they happen. follow through and report these incidents when they happen. So now looking ahead, um I think, again, there's a lot of information that I've captured here, but um looking ahead to next year, um our work continues, and so there are specific initiatives that we will focus on next year. And again, each initiative really aligns again back to the uh priority, uh priority areas of the DEIB Strategic Plan. And so for PD, you know, we, we are going to offer our PD uh paths, again, that are going to be available to, to our educators. Um we are actively reviewing uh our district budget uh so that we are able to allocate um some fiscal resources to ensure that our professional development offerings is available and accessible uh to our support staff, uh pre-K through twelve. In terms of school culture, uh of course, many of you have heard, you know, we are in the process of implementing our restorative practices across all the schools, especially at the secondary level. Um we are also uh in terms of culturally responsive curriculum, um you know, you know, the uh Black History Course that I mentioned earlier um is is really historical, right? Because I think um Joe Zellner, who was a former history teacher, you know, when he retired many, many years ago, I'd say maybe ten, fifteen years ago, uh the course really ended with him. So there used to be a Black History Course that, that Mrs. Zellner actually taught. And so when he retired, that course um sort of, you know, retired with him. And so I'm again, very excited that we are taking an intentional approach and bringing this course uh this course back. And then, of course, our work around reviewing diverse books will continue um next year with our Cultural Competency and Literature Committee. Um so uh more to come on that. In terms of student and family engagement, um you know, new this year, we, we, uh you know, I collaborated with, with various community partners to host our MLK Junior Day Breakfast. Um again, I think that, that, that event will continue next year. Um we are going to still continue to support our Ninth Grade Academy Nubian Square Tour, uh which is uh supported by MEKO Headquarters and, of course, the MEKO CEO Millie Abahay Thomas. Uh we are going to support the student government in expanding their multicultural uh food festival, and then, of course, the international festivals at the elementary, across the elementary schools. Our ninth graders, again, uh will participate in the Ideas Bias Training in the Fall. The expansion of the Celtics Playbook Initiative to our fifth graders will also occur in the fall. Um and then I'm again, hoping to continue uh my, my, my uh meetings and, 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 and uh my meetings with students uh in the DEIB Student Advisory Council. In terms of hiring and um hiring, mentoring and retention, we are, you know, we are going to continue leveraging uh MPDE. Um you know, as we uh look to hire more diverse educators across teaching, administration, and, and staff positions. Our goal next year, Denise and I, you know, we were able to attend the MPDE Hiring Fair uh this year. And so our goal next year is to attend at least two Hiring Fairs next year. And there's a lot of work that goes behind the scenes to prepare for, for, for those diversity fairs. And so um that's, that's our goal next year. Um we are working with the CCTA um to host a focus group with Wellesley College uh to learn um to learn a little bit about how we can enhance our district's um uh strategies when it comes to recruitment, um hiring and retention. And so we are working closely with Wellesley College to um really invite uh any of their uh students of color and then uh faculty of color to, to join us in that focus group. So more to come on that. Uh in terms of institution accountability, of course, our Bias Incident Response Protocol and Reporting System, um you know, my goal is to have this fully implemented um by the end of the year, so ended by the end of December. Um but again, there's a lot of work that is going into making sure that, you know, folks in our community are aware of, of, of this system that we are rolling out. And then in addition to that, there are specific uh training workshops that we are going to offer for our faculty and staff, for students, and for our parent community. So more to come on that. And then very exciting, I think, you know, again, you, you can learn more from, from Kristen Anderson. We we have um partnered with LinkedIn. I'm saying the right, it's not LinkedIn, it's LinkedIn. To create our data dashboard, which, you know, I think many of us are really excited uh to see, and this, this data dashboard will highlight a lot of the district metrics and baseline data that we are all uh looking uh looking for, and, and, and all the data will be available um in our, in our dashboard in real time. So it'll be real time progress monitoring. Uh so a lot of great things are happening there. I will end with uh three uh end of the year events that I know many folks in our community are participating in. Uh Living the Legacy of MEKO is an annual conference that is hosted by uh MEKO Headquarters. Uh this event is happening on Friday, June second. Uh we have roughly twenty-one educators uh from our district that will be attending this conference. Uh the Waiting Hour is a presentation by Ron Jones. Uh Ron is the Executive Director and Artistic Principal with Dialogues on Diversity. Uh Ron has, has actually been in Concord many times. He's presented on MEKO. Um he's presented on uh MLK and Shared Dreams. Um he, he understands, you know, what is needed here in the community, and so I'm working closely with him um uh on this event, which will be on Monday, June fifth. And this particular event is on Zoom. And then lastly, Race Emity Day uh Community Putt Look. Uh this is our second annual event, uh which is organized um by myself, um Richie Yamatino, who is co-chair of the uh Concord Carlisle Human Rights Council, and uh G Orlov, who is a site director at the Montessori School here in Concord. So um together, we are the planning committee for the Race Emity Day uh Putt Look, and I believe we are actually partnering with uh Joe Palumbo, who is now Chair of the Concord uh Town of Concord DEI Commission to host this event. So this event is really open to, you know, all students, families, employees uh who, who work and live in this, in this community. So I hope you will join us on Sunday, June eleventh. And this event will be at Alcott. And that is all that I have for today. Just want to say again, thank you to, you know, there are many folks in this, in this picture, but again, as you will see, um the work around DEIB in our community really is, is a community effort. It is not just me as the DEIB Director leading this. I think I have a coalition, I have a team um of folks really behind me supporting this work uh from Dr. Hunter to the School Committee, to our admin team, to our CCTA and CTA, to our students. Just everyone really uh is, is, is in support and committed uh to this work. So thank you and looking forward to what we can accomplish next year.
Wow, that was, it's so much information is on here. Can I ask you, can we get a link to your presentation?
Yes.
For members that aren't here, um so then, and we'll probably link it to the agenda too, just so people can see. There's literally so much information that, it's amazing. So thank you for all of that. So I'm gonna open it up to the committee uh first for questions, comments, and I know Sarah's online. So Sarah, if you have any questions, just use the raise hand feature so I can see you. But I'll, I'll leave it to everyone first, and I have some questions. Do you want to go around? I want to start.
I have a couple of questions. So thanks, Andrew. Um that was a lot. Like as Tracy said, I'm excited to go back and read it again. Take some, take my time with it. A couple of just, um I mean, clearly, there's been a lot of work on this space, and I think that's amazing. I guess my like, oh, my biggest overall question um and is more, I have some specific questions, but then my biggest overall question is kind of anecdotally. Can you speak to like how you think, how you think students think? Now that I want you to speak for other people, but how do you think we're doing in this work? And like, these are all very tangible, awesome things, but like, what's the impact?
Yeah, so you know, I think, you know, when I think about our students, um particularly around some of the diverse books that we're implementing, I know when I talk to students, they are feeling like it's about time, right? It's about time they felt represented. Represented, right? Not just in the curriculum, but someone in the district is actually paying attention to them, to their identities, to their stories, right? And so um, you know, I, I want, one of the um quotes that I actually wanted to read on one of the slides, uh one of the students in the DEIB um Advisory Council um actually talked a lot about the need for teachers to feel comfortable giving students more diverse books. So they want more choices, right?
Not just as a choice.
Just as a choice, but as everyone is all school read, a summer read, you know? Um so I know they, certainly students in particular, um are really feeling the impact of this work, that it is intentional, right? That we are paying attention, right? Um and then, of course, for the faculty, you know, I think I have looked through the Equity Audit uh data, and what is surprising, well, I wouldn't say, it's surprising to me when I think about what is happening in other districts. But here in Concord, I feel like there's just such a strong commitment for the work. Right? I mean, to have both teacher associations behind this work and to um you know, talk about the values in this work amongst each other and the need for more professional development. I mean, we already offer so much and they're asking for more, right? They're hungry, right? Uh for, for more PD. Um and I think the most important piece, particularly for faculty, is for faculty of color to feel like they that they are comfortable enough to, 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 to be in a space where they feel comfortable enough to speak up, right? About some of the inequities that, that impact them as educators, but are impacting students that are right in front of them. I think we have heard from, you know, m- many of our faculty of color this year about the experiences. Um you know, they feel empowered to share those experiences with us. Um so I think, so I think we're making progress there. Um and of course, you know, when you look at our retention rates, um you know, we will love to retain everyone, of course, but you know, we know there are other factors at play uh in terms of, of retaining our educators, but I know we are very much intentional about um um how we, we retain those educators. Um and then I think, you know, community-wide, um beyond the walls of our schools, you know, we have community partners that are you know, in support of the work that we do, um trust the work is happening in our schools and that we are putting the needs uh the diverse needs of our students and, of course, our educators um at the center of everything. And so looking through um you know, making decisions through the lens of DEIB, um making sure that folks feel represented, making sure that our, our, our historically marginalized groups are at the seat, are at the table, right? Um you know, I mentioned the appointment of, of Ayesha Lawton and, and Domingos as, as MEKO representatives on the school committee, like those, those steps that we are taking actually makes our community, you know, more inclusive, because folks look at that appointment and say, and see that, hey, we have someone that looks like me, who's serving on the school committee and perhaps can carry the voices and my experiences when they are, uh when they are in the space, when they are in these uh school committee meetings. And so that's important. So I think overall, you know, I, I continue to say that we have really built a coalition uh around this work and, and the support and the commitment is, 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 you know, I'm, I'm just grateful to be in, in Concord, in Concord uh Public Schools, Concord Carlisle Regional School District where um there's no doubt, right? There's no doubt in terms of the support and the commitment in this work. Um and we are just, we're just grinding, we're just, we're just really grinding, so.
You have worked really hard, um just from this presentation and hearing you speak previously and my own observations, like there, there have been like real intentional foundational things put into place um at the, all the different levels. And I'm just really excited to see how over time, I mean, it's not gonna happen immediately, over time, how those blocks kind of hopefully build an even stronger community.
Absolutely.
Um and not to I, 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 we have a lot of work to do. Um and um but this feels like a really good start.
Yeah.
Um you did touch on one of my other questions on the teacher retention. Do you know how that speak, how that compares to like our white teacher population?
Ah, that, that would, that's interesting.
It seemed high to me, because I feel like our teachers, um and so I'm just curious what, what you're doing on that.
I will definitely look up that data in comparison. Um but in terms of the retention piece, um you know, new this year, as I mentioned, we received a grant award from DESI. And so one of the areas that we're looking at is you know, tuition reimbursement. You know, we know a lot of our tutors, um particularly many of our tutors of color are interested in pursuing uh their educator license, right? And so one of the ways that I think, one of the, not I think, it's a fact, one of the ways you retain faculty support staff of color is by supporting them through that process. Right? And I think we have heard from a lot of our educators of color currently who have, who are requesting um specific financial incentives to support them in that process.
And does that grant give you some flexibility on how you use it? Like, is it, you could do like a signing?
Yes.
Or you could kind of figure out what the needs are.
So the, uh the, so the grant actually is supporting the following incentives. Signing bonuses is one. Tuition reimbursement, relocation assistance.
Okay.
Um just to name a few. Um and so again, we are hearing from our educators of color in the district, both sides, uh CPS and CCRSD, um who have since requested some financial need. And um and again, it's, it's.
Yeah, it looks like it's gonna mostly go to people who are already here.
Right.
Uh primarily because our salaries are strong enough, we drop people without the bonuses. Um but I think one really important thing that happened in putting the information out to the diverse staff was we learned what their goals are. We learned what they're working on. We learned a lot about what else we can do to support them besides these, you know, relatively minor amounts of money, because how many people responded? Twenty?
Over twenty.
Over twenty. Only have thirty thousand across two districts, so it's not huge fiscal uh incentive, but we now know what they're working on, and I feel like that was really powerful.
We can continue to support them to meet their professional goals, right? So that once they are licensed, they stay here Concord. I mean, that's the goal, so um.
I have one other one. Uh this is a quick, I think. I'm just curious what the plan is for the bias reporting form for the like broader rollout. You mentioned end of year, but is that just six to twelve? How, like, how do you, how are you thinking?
So, so I think the focus right now is, you know, middle and high school. Um but in terms of, you know, as we sort of come to a close this year, what I'm working on is actually um a document that's basically like an FAQ. Um because I think it's important before going into next year, that families really understand the why of, you know, that this bias uh uh report inform. And so I have a document that I've been working on for, for, for a couple of weeks now that um it's in a draft form. Uh Dr. Hunter needs to review it, um but it will share a lot more information about sort of our implementation plan, our timeline for, for the training, uh uh workshops that we will offer in the fall. But I think the focus currently is, is middle, high school students.
Thank you. Sorry. Back to you guys. Yeah, go ahead, Sharon.
For my questions as well. First, thank you uh for all the work you've done. Um when you think about the depth of the work in just one year, it's incredible and it's multi-dimensional. And also thank you to Dr. Hunter for supporting and allowing this um work to be done in the district. It's meaningful and it's necessary.
Yeah.
Just, just all the information, all of the work from all the different angles that you are working at and involving student voice, which is so important. You know, it's nice to know that you have someone looking out for you, but also have a voice in that work that's representing you. Um I just had one question. Uh when you were talking about professional development, I think there was a stat of eighty-four percent were per, at the participants, at the participants were faculty. And um I'm curious to know why that number isn't one hundred percent or?
Yeah, no.
Did you include the faculty meetings in that number?
No, I did not.
So that, that, that's where it's a hundred percent.
That's where it's a hundred percent. So I, uh that was just focused on the PD paths.
Yeah, I was just curious.
And again, you know, we, we offered fifteen PD paths, but just ten of them were focused on DEIB.
Okay.
So you're not, you know, So you're not, you know, even when that number.
The faculty meeting was this change for us because we wanted to be sure we had opportunities that all staff participated in. Um, so we didn't quite get there at the middle school because of the way the calendar worked, but all the other schools had a hundred percent of the teaching faculty present for three sessions this, this year. So that to us was game changing in a way because it took it away from being optional or voluntary to mandated.
And those P D paths are a choice, right? So you have eighty-four percent choosing, okay, this, those paths too, which I think is, you know, just speaks to the fact that you said how much support that you really feel from the faculty.
Yep.
So if we did include the D E I B, I'm sure we're probably upwards of ninety-eight percent.
That's amazing. Well, thank you. It's, it's a lot of work to, you know, um, kind of cultivate cultural responsiveness and responsibility. And you've done that. So thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right.
So I've got a few questions. Andrew, thank you. Um, I, I got here in nineteen eighty-five. The conversations were, uh, sadly similar. You know, we, we've been at this a long time, um, but a great deal has changed in the last couple of years. Um, so thank you, because I think you've been positioned appropriately to, to, to lead it for us. Um, I've got a few questions. I'm going to go in, in a few different areas. Um, the, I, I want to start with the reporting form. Um, because I see that as a, uh, valuable tool. But I'm not yet convinced it's an empowering tool. And, and here's why. Um, we for many years here have really espoused the idea of putting, uh, trusted adults at the disposal of our kids, of our students. But that was really central to, uh, kids being safe. Um, and, and so I'm curious is, can we simply say that the web-based reporting tool is the empowering tool that the trusted adults are not? How do those two fit together? Can you speak to that? Because, because my instinct says I'd go to the trusting adult before I would formally expose myself in a web-based portal if I was a child. So I wonder how that, how you think that works and what you've heard from Belmont and, and other, other. And I know it's a work in progress too. So we're doing a little bit of speculation here. I get that, right?
So just two points. Number one, I strongly believe every child deserves a trusted adult. Okay, that's number one. And I think if we were to survey students, I think the majority of students will say to you that they do have a trusted adult that they can absolutely go to. And then number two, the biased reporting form can be completed anonymously, right? And I know, you know, earlier in the winter, through our D E I B steering committee, we had one student, a couple of students actually said to us, you know, some of us that are on the committee said, you know, if we, if we, I don't want to use the word force, but if we create this form and it enables students to identify themselves when they are, when they complete the form, it actually will deter them from even making that report in the first place, right? And so we, we listened, we, we acknowledged that feedback from our students. And in addition to that committee meeting, I also held a focus group specifically with our, um, our middle school Celtics playbook leaders. And we had one, um, um, high school student who joined that meeting. And they, they echoed those same sentiments, right? We have to make that form anonymous. If I'm a student that just witnessed a biased incident, students know they have the option to go to their trusted adult. They absolutely know that. What was clear in the equity audit, right, is that students also were unaware of a mechanism in which they could capture that incident in a form, in some document, and, you know, and so creating this form allows them to sometimes in real time, right, they are able to go to, you know, CMS dot Concord PS dot org and fill out that form immediately after that incident happens and not wait two, three months. Right? To report that incident. And I'm not, you know, I won't stay here to say that, you know, somewhat, even some of the recent, just as, just since Monday, we have had students who, because of the assembly we held on Monday, did walk away from that assembly feeling like, wow, there is a, there is a form that I can now fill out. And I'm going to follow up on an incident that happened three months ago.
This is an assembly just to roll out the form.
Just to roll out the form for middle, for Concord Middle School, right? And so we do have trusted adults, students know who their trusted adults are. I think this bias reporting form adds another layer of, I don't know, communication of choice of access, right? To be able to now say, okay, if, 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 if this incident happened during school, right? And I'm, and I'm not feeling comfortable to go to that trusted adult. Well, guess what? When I get home, I can fill out this form. Right? And this form goes directly to the principal, it goes to me, right? And investigation is, 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 um, is, is, is started. Um, and so again, I think, I think, you know, it does, it does empower students and we have seen that even within the, you know, within three days of, of rolling this out at the, at the middle school. Um, so I think part of this, this rollout of the middle school, and I said to Principal Cameron is we definitely want to also survey students. Um, I'm hoping, you know, there's a lot going on between now and the end of the school year, but early in the fall, we definitely want to survey students uh, to see how they are, um, sort of accessing this form, whether it is impactful for them, right? I think it's important that we capture that.
Yeah, I think I'd just add to that. We saw very loud and clear in the equity audit, the kids don't know how to report other than the trusted adult. So I think it was really purposeful that we lay that out for them and intentionally tell them. Um, other pieces that we've seen very clearly their work, they're looking for a way to do that. We've had more dummied emails come to us lately where they create a fake account so they can report. Um, social media is another spot that is where reporting is happening, which is exactly where we don't want the report because we don't have access to it. It requires another child sometimes to tell us. And to give them a really, really definitive place to go, aside from the trusted adult, um, seemed, seemed really critical. And I'll, I'll echo the, the feedback from the kids was it needs to be anonymous. Um, so we're, we're going to work through that and look to see how that plays itself out. Um, but it's, it was a really, I think some of it's how you deliver the message to that assembly. I was there. Um, the question was posed to the entire seventh and eighth grade, how many of you have witnessed an act of hate, prejudice bias? The entire auditorium, every hand went up. We aren't getting four hundred reports, so we needed to, to offer them another, another tool. The message from the kids, some of the kids presented to their peers, Andrew, Justin, was very clearly of empowerment. Um, and that this was an opportunity to make it a more welcoming, belonging, inclusive environment. So um, we're really hopeful. It's been a, been a great, we, I'll be honest, we were skeptical.
Very.
We were very skeptical. This administrative team really pushed back at the beginning, like, we're just going to get flooded with anonymous fake reports and all we're going to do is chase that. And, um, we really did the homework in time and listening activities with the kids to realize that probably wasn't the case. We need, it was just really important that we give them the opportunity.
Absolutely.
Yeah, just, well, when we talk about trusted adult, we have like the portrait of the Concord graduate. Have we surveyed the kids to find out what the portrait of a trusted adult looks like and what those traits are?
Yeah.
Maybe share that with the staff. So if that's what the kids are looking for, uh, and that's what they're drawn to, that, that may be.
Yeah, great point.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great.
You referenced, uh, the new data platform or the dashboard, LinkedIn, I guess, was it?
I think, yeah, that's. We think that's.
Is that in our twenty twenty-four budget?
Yes, Kristen's budgeted for it.
Okay, all right. Um, because we do understand from, from the administration that uh, our D E I B work is so embedded everywhere that we can't really ascertain what our budget is, what our resources are devoted to it, um, in, in its entirety. Um, but I think, uh, it's important to the school committee that, uh, you're confident you've got the resources to, to do what you want, uh, on our behalf. Um, I'll share with you what I suppose is a, a, a leading and rhetorical comment here. Um, I'm, I'm of a mind that, uh, genuine, uh, lasting culture change is going to take years of sustained work before it's embedded, as the language has it. Um, do, here's my leading question. Do you foresee a time when perhaps in five or seven years, I don't know what it would be, that, uh, we can uh, have things sufficiently embedded so that we're not stipending as much of this work as we are now, but it becomes everybody's business, not stipended work for individuals? Because it strikes me, much of the, uh, effort that you have suggested to us does require uh, financial compensation to individuals and specific, uh, people and groups around the district. I, I hope for the day when it's everybody's business and it's absent specific compensation related to D E I B. Is that too lofty a dream?
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
I mean, I, I, I was just.
I know what I think. You go ahead.
Share the example, Dr. Hunter, uh, shared with me a couple of days ago about our, our, um, about our retention, you know, when you walked in here, twenty seventeen, I think the number of, uh, the, the percentage of students of color, right? Was around what? Ten percent?
Uh, it's fif- it was fifteen and it's twenty-five now.
And it's right, and it's now twenty-six percent, right? And so, um, that's, that's one data point. When we look at our, um, in terms of our commitment in diversifying our staff, right? We have both, uh, unions committed to that, to that, uh, uh, work, to those efforts, right? And so it's not just my work, right? It is the work of other folks in the community who are seeing the value in the work on D E I B. And they are saying, you know what? We need to do more in these specific areas, whether it's hiring, whether it's professional development, whether it's school culture. And then in terms of school culture, you know, we just spent some time talking with, um, uh, Joe Palumbo about the culture that we have created at Concord Middle School, right? I think a few years ago, if, you know, if, if, if you were to talk with students at, at Sanborn and Peabody, you would have felt that they were just two separate middle schools, right? It was Peabody Middle School and Sanborn Middle School, right? And now we have, you know, a lot of effort from Principal Cameron, right? To shift that mindset to a, to a culture where all students at Concord Middle School feel like they are one, right? That it is one Concord Middle School and not this two, two, uh, two worlds that they're living in, um, and, 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 um, within that, um, timeframe of their, uh, educational journey. Um, so I think, you know, there are, and I can go, you know, I can go on with many examples, um, but I do think, you know, e- even with our P D paths, right, the data is there, our faculty want more professional development, right, focused on D E I B. And here's where it gets even, I, I just, it just dawned on me, in the equity audit, the majority of our faculty actually are, um, actually welcome the idea of us evaluating them on their level of cultural proficiency, right? They actually are inviting that and they are, um, they are open to that. And, 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 you know, I'll add that Desi already has a rubric. I mean, our teacher rubric, you know, includes it already. And so if our teachers were saying, you know, we're doing all this work, how can we get some, you know, how can we get evaluated on it? So we know we are on the right track. Well, guess what? We should, we should begin to look into that and start, um, having that be part of our supervision evaluation. Uh, um, uh, process and, 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 you know, dialogue with our educators. Um, so in terms of accountability, right, like they're holding themselves accountable to, to, to how this work is evolving for them and their practice. Um.
Yeah, I think the only thing I'd add is just, uh, all those goals you described are exactly where we want to be. And yet the teacher leader role is such a value for us and so powerful for us as a school district on all topics. Um, that I, I don't know when the point will be where we would want to, to not specifically name teacher leaders among the faculty. Um, having been at different meetings, faculty meetings where those leaders are running the discussion and the session and really some embedded P D. Um, the response of the colleague to colleague interaction is just so meaningful. And they talk to each other as teachers, not that we're not educators, but people who are in classrooms day to day talk differently to each other than they do to us for lots of really valid reasons. Um, and I just not sure we'd want to wean, wean off of that. Um, so.
And do you have your teacher leads in place? I know at one point you were still looking for one, maybe at Thoreau. Like, do you, do you feel like you have, but each school identified and will they continue next year?
Absolutely. So I think, um, I am, you know, I meet with all of our D E I B teacher leads every other week. Um, and so.
I don't, I don't know about the D E I B teacher.
Yeah. So, so each, each building essentially, you know, I worked very closely with, uh, CTA and CCTA presidents last year to, you know, essentially create a position where we have one or two, um, uh, educators in each of our school building who really competent, who can really, um, you know, now, you know, number one, work closely with their colleagues around this work. Um, for, you know, providing, uh, P D opportunities. Um, and then number two, someone to really be bespoke beyond me, right? Because of course I can't get to all six schools every single day, right? But, but have another individual, another educator that can partner with me in helping, um, in helping them meet the needs within their school building around the D E I B work. Um, so that, the, the position has really evolved nicely where the D E I B teacher leads are facilitating their building-based cultural competency committee, which serves as sort of a steering committee, right, for their school building. And so, um, the admin team within that school building works closely with the teacher, the E I B teacher lead. Um, to, you know, to draft, um, you know, the agenda for those committee meetings. Um, and they also bring back a lot of the work that they do within the committee meeting to the wider faculty. Um, uh, during their faculty meetings every month. Um, so, you know, again, I think the, the responsibilities that the D I B teacher leads have now is manageable. Um, and I want to make sure that they feel supported and they have that sense of direction, um, that they need to take to, um, you know, advance the work, uh, uh, within their school building and feel supported not only from me, but from the admin team that is at their school. Um, so, you know, I think, again, you know, I am working, you know, I actually just ended my presentation with Thoreau, uh, I think it was just last month. And they, you know, all the educators that I met with are very much, they welcome the idea of a position. I think I just need to work closely with them to better understand the scope of responsibilities and how, how the role is going to fit the needs of Thoreau. And of course, we have a new principal at Thoreau. Uh, uh, and so, you know, working with him next year is going to be, it's going to be exciting to, to hear a little bit about his ideas and how this position needs to fit within, you know, his own goals, right? And the school improvement plans that, that Thoreau Angel currently is, is putting together. And of course, it's important that we get the feedback from the faculty in terms of how this position fits in at the role. So.
Right. Did you have anything else, Court, before we go to say?
I would hope that over time you can help the school committee understand how uh, some of the work that's being done that has financial compensation and thereby a measure of extrinsic motivation moves toward more of a, it's everybody's business and we are intrinsically motivated to, to, uh, all, uh, engage in it. Uh, D E I B T- teacher leads may be, may be unique, but I'm, I'm hoping not everything is, is unique, requiring uh, uh, compensation, unique compensation, it's D E B I B compensation. Because I think true cultural change means you, you, you bring it in. Because I think true cultural change means you you bring it into your heart, you bring it into your mind, you bring it into your life, you bring it into your teaching.
Yeah, I just want to respond a little bit to that. I think that's what is evolving. The DEIB leads are so impassioned about that, and it's so intrinsic in that that they're willing to be leaders of their peers. So I don't know that I feel like they're being externally motivated. I feel like they're actually getting a chance to lead in a way that, um, you know, our structures are such that we do stipend people. They're getting like two thousand dollars a year like this. This isn't very much money. It's also avoiding us asking for other FTEs, DEIB-specific FTEs, which I think would be coming if we didn't have the positions. So I think it's all how you frame it. I think we all have the same goals and the same.
So the leads to any of the professional development, like will they be leading workshops at some point amongst, you know, their schools, amongst the staff? And maybe that's more what you're getting at, you know, versus outsourcing some of the PD. Will they be leading their own?
They have led PD this year, absolutely.
It's great.
Yeah.
A couple of other things. Do we still do exit interviews for anybody?
Oh, that's, that's great. You mentioned that. That was one of the items on the progress modern spreadsheet there. Yes, we absolutely do exit interviews and actually knew this year we, you know, there was a form that, you know, any employee that was exited in our district will fill out paper. They perform, we now have put that form in a Google, in a Google form template. And that way we're able to sort of track some of the responses, you know, it's just easier through Google forms.
Who conducts them and who evaluates that information so that we get institutional learning?
Yeah, HR.
HR and then passes along as appropriate.
Good. Back to HR, you mentioned that she'll be presenting to the steering committee. Is there a way that the school committee can get access to some of those findings? Because I think those would be of value to the school committee.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we get that on the agenda.
Right. Uh, and finally, um, support staff data seem to be absent today. Um, is that going to be forthcoming?
In terms of retention, in terms of.
I believe your your table of the different staff groups.
They were embedded, they were definitely there.
It seems to me that's a significant number that.
I think when you get the slides, you'll see they they're there.
Yeah.
Pretty, pretty much throughout.
Because I saw faculty, I saw.
Admin, and I think there's support. I think it was.
Yeah, it's broken out also.
It's broken out.
Can you pull it up?
Yeah, he'll grab this one.
Maybe I looked but didn't see. Support staff. So I I was looking for numbers in the column and didn't see.
Okay, yeah, so that.
And I thought that might be useful data because that's not a small number.
No.
So if you could add that so we could understand that, I think that'd be useful to the school committee.
So.
And let me just look around. Finally, uh, it was the uh, Teachers Union who really took some initiative on saying, in effect, we want to be involved, we want to be more involved. Teachers want to be more involved. Dr. Hunter, maybe you can remind us, to what degree did we see included in the contract a resumption of uh, required training, ala the EMI, I guess, ideas now? Was that a first five years? Is that what?
It's first five.
Okay.
I think we're having some discussion that you'll hear as we go back to the bargaining table to make it sooner than that. So it's first five.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, Sarah, you've been very patient online. Sorry.
Hi, hi, hi. Thanks. Thanks for this presentation. I'm sort of, I think, sort of following on to a couple of of questions, comments that that have come before. Sort of as a follow on to Carrie's question about, you know, how do we know, like, how do we, how do we understand the sentiment and all that? Do we, do, do we, I mean, we have metrics for standardized test scores, for enrollment and success in advanced coursework and all of that. Do we have a, like, a student survey, climate survey kind of thing that that can, this sort of touches on a bunch of the questions from the equity audit to to monitor progress or 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 holes?
Yeah, that's a great. That's a great question, Sarah. I am actually working with Dr. Paula Martin to create a Belongin Culture Climate Survey. I would say it's about seventy five percent done because we really want to be intentional about the questions that we are asking. Um, and so she's essentially helping to review the questions that are on that survey. Right now it's in a, it's in a Google form format. But, you know, that that survey, I'm I'm hoping that in the fall that we, that we do, um, that we do share that survey district wide. And I, and and right now, the the survey that I have is really focused on. Well, it is focused on the students, but I think you can easily take the questions on the survey and apply it to our, um, our educators in the district. But again, you know, we want to make sure that we are asking the right questions.
Yeah, great. Okay. I mean, I can't imagine that's an easy, eh eh, easy thing to frame and figure out exactly what it is. How you elicit the most honest and and useful responses, I guess, is is I'm sure a tricky, a tricky thing. And then I had a question yesterday on the PBS NewsHour. They highlighted this, these apprenticeship, teacher apprenticeship programs that the government, the federal, you know, government is now funding. And I didn't know, they said that I think there are like seventeen states that currently offer these to expand. I mean, it it's something to to expand the, you know, the net for for possible incoming teachers. And i- is Massachusetts doing anything along these lines?
I can definitely.
Not specifically that I know of. There's certainly a lot of initiatives coming from Desi. Different opportunities. Like we said, I haven't, I haven't seen that one.
Yeah, because the, yeah, the Biden administration is funding this. And I mean, now it's, but you have to be registered. I think the first you have to be registered, the state has to be registered with the, with the federal government. And then the school has to be registered with the state, but it was interesting. It 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 was, it was fascinating.
Certainly keep an eye out.
Because, uh, Dr. Hunter, from, I'm gonna say, you were having conversations earlier in the year with some local community colleges or.
Or UMass, uh, yeah, UMass Lowell. Yeah, yeah. Conversation with, we've been reaching out in a number of different directions to varying degrees of impact. So, um, we're taking it both from that direction and looking at, I think, our own internal pool of possible candidates who are looking to move up. So we're going to continue to reach out to the colleges. The more student teachers we bring in, like all those relationships would be really important to keep growing. Uh, and then then really supporting our own folks. I will say, you know, just anecdotally, we've had, I had, I I was able to meet a Mecca alumni at the senior night the other, the other two weeks ago that's in a math educator program. And I'll tell you, Deb Jemison's almost got her signed up already to teach. So I think really supporting and encouraging our own, our own folks and then reaching out widely is really important.
That was what was really neat about that apprenticeship program that they talked about yesterday. They, I mean, they started with this woman who had been a bus driver for many years, loved working with kids, always wanted to be a teacher, but didn't see a financial path forward to achieving that. And through this apprenticeship program was able, or, you know, is on the road to 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 getting there. Um, so.
I think similar to that was how excited we were when the staff responded to the grant and how many of them were looking to take MTELS and things like that. And that, I think, has allowed us the opportunity to figure out what supports they do need. Obviously, we'll hope for the fiscal package to come along with it, but I think we're agreement that it's an important opportunity.
Great. That's all I had. Thanks.
Thank you.
I just had a couple of questions. Sorry, so I keep going on. You've answered a lot of them. One is the Black History Course at CCHS. Is that like a year-long, like a teacher meeting with students, like department head? Like, how, how are they developing the class?
Yeah, so in the fall, still, uh, eleventh and twelfth graders who sign up for the course will work closely with, um, I think it's Chris Gauthier, so she's a teacher. Um, and so the course that's going to exist in the fall is really to, um, to help create the final course.
First during the school year that kids are taking to create, oh, that's.
Create the Black History Course.
Create a course.
Be open and which will be available to all students twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year.
So it can be kind of like a research seminar type class and okay.
Yep.
Okay, um, let's see, my DEIB teacher leads. The biased reporting form, so the middle school started rolling out this week. When do you see CCHS rolling out?
Yeah, so I think the timeline that I have, you know, September is always so busy. And so I'm aiming for October.
Okay.
That roll out. And again, it has to be in line with, particularly for the students, it has to be in line with the bias training that we do for the ninth graders.
Right.
And so I know one of the feedback that I heard this year from the Ninth Grade Academy team is that they are hoping, they're hoping to, you know, to have more time to get to know the students.
Right.
And so we might end up having the bias training sometime in November, similar to this year. So the academy really wants to spend September, October, really, you know, building that sense of community within, within the Ninth Grade Academy. And so the timeline has shifted a little bit, but I think early November will probably be my goal.
Which makes sense. The common language at the middle school of the playbook was such an important, critical foundation to the whole discussion that you don't want to just roll it out and not, not have a backdrop to it.
Right.
Yeah.
And when you showed that pie chart on the bias reports from this year, how are those getting reported?
Yeah, that's a great, great, um, let me just put that on the screen here. So the reports are, as as we capture them this year, are just, you know, students going directly
To teachers.
To teachers or, um, again, to your point, trusted adult, to school, um, admin team that are exist in the buildings. And, you know, and then the admin team is informing me of what those incidents are.
Okay.
So we've been able to capture, um, for the most part, almost all the incidents that have occurred this year.
Okay, that's great. I think I had one more question before we just look. Oh, are there biased reporting form posters? Like you had that QR code on there? Like, are there going to be posters in the building? Because, you know, kids are just on their phones. So will they just?
Yeah, I am actually, if you look back on, I think I might have said something on one of these slides. I I have located a vendor. And so I have a budget that I am, I am working with.
Okay.
That we will have, you know, so for the protocol, we are going to make, you know, laminated copies of it. And I think they're going to go. We haven't really talked through this a lot, but I'm hoping that we put those in, you know, high traffic areas. So like, you know, the 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 student services, uh, so student support services office where all of our guidance counselors are at, obviously the main office, and it'll be available for any teacher to have the protocol displayed in their classroom. In addition to that, we will have, uh, the QR code that students can scan. That'll bring them directly to the form. That will be made available to anyone. We can post it in classrooms. I mean, anywhere really, right? Agenda books, students can have.
Yeah, yeah.
The agenda books and whatnot. Um, but again, I'm, I just literally, I think it was just yesterday that I, I located a vendor that we have actually used in the past, that the Black Student Union actually used two years ago to create their stickers. And so working on that now.
Okay. Well, this was excellent. I mean, very thorough. The, I mean, thank you for the tremendous amount of work that you've really, you know, poured into this. I think, you know, even two years ago, when this kind of, when you stepped into the role. I mean, this, you've really developed it into something that has been amazing for us. You are getting, you know, praise all over town. I I listened to this morning, Joe Palumbo, really, you know, he is great. And he really talked about how far ahead the schools really are. And he's really looking forward to, you know, working with you to kind of bring some of that to the town level. So, you know, I think we really appreciate all the work that's gone into this and you have definitely built, you know, a department. I heard that, you know, when I was, I wasn't even in school, many people were looking for a department. And it feels like we have a department, um, just with with our current staff that's here. Um, and to Court's point, you know, with those DEIB, DEIB leads and all of that, it does create the feel of a robust department.
Yeah, and you know, I I will just end by, you know, to Court's point earlier, this work is everyone's business, right? And I intentionally use the word coalition, right? Because that's what it feels like to me, right? When you have this level of support and engagement and commitment, that's what it feels like, right? That you have a coalition and it's not just the schools, right? It is the community doing this work. And so, um, I think it's it's important that that we continue to have that be the narrative, um, right? So, yeah, it's grateful.
Thank you. Well, before we adjourn, I'm going to break our protocol a little bit. We, we have, um, I think we have one person with a hand up for public comment. So we typically do public comment at the beginning of our meeting and I never open it up at the end. But I will open it up at the end because I think there was technical difficulty also. So thank you for joining us. If you can state your name and address, and just before you go, I'll just give you my speech of you have three minutes. This is a meeting in the public, but not with the public, so we won't be making any comments. Um, and you can go right ahead, Rob Monroe.
I appreciate that and I apologize for the breaking the protocol here, but I'm grateful for the allowance. Rob Monroe, fourteen hundred Lower Road here in Concord. Just want to start off by saying and re- repeating everything that folks have said. Giving praise and and shout out to you, Andrew and and Dr. Hunter for the amazing work you guys are doing as a community member and hopefully a member of this coalition. You you speak of Andrew, it's it's humbling and also really affirming to to see the work you guys are doing in the interest of the students um, and the adults here. I'm here to represent a a voice that's been increasingly loud and hopefully one that's in increasingly supportive of the work that's going on with, uh, with the new middle school. And, you know, there've been, there've been seven hundred or so folks who have signed a petition to name that middle school, the Ellen Garrison Jackson Middle School. You know, the 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 time is incredibly acute to to do that in honor of really one of the most celeb, you know, underserved but celebrated educators in Concord's history on her two hundredth birthday. Someone who represents every single value that was not only talked about today, but value that's represented in the unveiling of this middle school. And I I know that the the school board has the the prerogative to to name schools and I would, I would simply request and that the school committee with the superintendent look very hard into the naming of the school. You know, many students and adults and community members of color recognize that this DEIB work happens with places and faces. And the two build off one another. And so I think recognizing this place as a monument for Ellen Garrison Jackson and the works she did to advance education, not only for black folks, but also for folks in and around the Concord area and beyond, is not only a testament to her great work and the work that you guys are all doing, but it's really the community's work. And so as we advance, um, the voices and narratives of our Mecca families in our increasingly diverse town, to me, this is a no-brainer. And I, I want to thank you guys for, for taking this seriously and and for truly thinking it through. Because I think it's an amazing opportunity and one that we don't want to let go by. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, um, I will adjourn the Concord Carolina Regional School Committee. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Andrew, thank you. Laurie, thank you.